Evening, welcome to the October 20th Board of Education meeting. If you'd please stand for the pledge. Hey, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the following individual. Heather Galaresi, an employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Suzanne Lonergan-Price, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Jennifer Simpson, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Catherine McDonald, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Samuel Cleveland, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Time I'll make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing one legal matter with no action to follow and one personnel matter with no action to follow. All those in favor, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Second, Josh, all those in favor? Okay, this school board meeting, I'd like to read a proclamation. This proclamation is about School Board Recognition Week. Whereas public education is of vital importance of the future of our community, and the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District provides leadership, vision, policy, direction, and oversight for ensuring our educational excellence. Whereas the members of the Board of Education serve as volunteers and devote countless hours of their time, skill, commitment to guiding decisions in curriculum, budget, facilities, student support, and often making difficult choices in the best interest of all students. Whereas their steadfast advocacy, governance, and collaboration with educators, parents, and community stakeholders support their creation of safe, nurturing, equitable, and high-quality learning environments. Now therefore, I, Dr. Terry Ward, Superintendent of Schools on behalf of the North Syracuse Central School District, do hereby recognize the school board for their service to the district and call upon students, educators, parents, staff, and citizens to join in honoring the members of our Board of Education for their exemplary service, leadership, dedication to our children and our community. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be entered into the official minutes of the Board of Education meeting on October 20, 2025, to show our sincere appreciation. And I'm going to invite Andrew. He has a few words to say, so he's going to come up and say a few words.
I'm Andrew.
I'm Emerson.
We're both students at CNS, and we are also both members of the district's Policy Committee. We have directly seen the work that the Board of Education does, along with the process that goes into the board policies. Thank you for volunteering your time to make the district a better place that runs smoothly. All of us students greatly appreciate the work that is done and the effort that goes into being a board member.
And this is just a token of appreciation from our district, and Andrew and Emerson is going to pass them out to you. The token of appreciation is our new logo on our newest shirt from our CNS store. So just want to thank everyone, and thank you, Andrew and Emerson, for your help this evening. Let's give the Board of a round of applause, please. And we have one more surprise, and I'm going to need assistance from Jill to show a short video. And before we do, I just want to thank Publicly Lori Cook and the team from City Bosse's
Dear Board of Education, thank you so much for supporting Horizon Fox Starry's. Without it, we couldn't provide all these wonderful opportunities for these kids, and we so appreciate you on Fox Starry's yourself. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board of Education members.
Thank you for making school very fun.
Thank you, Board of Education.
Thank you for making all of this possible.
Thank you for volunteering your time. Thank you for having a fun learning environment for kids and families to grow and learn. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board of Education, for letting us have children.
They and I are so thankful for the opportunity, the support, remember to show up at things. They clap for these kids, they're part of the audience, they make sure that what the kids' need is here. They just want to learn, and they want to grab everything and do everything. And without the Board of Education, none of it would be possible.
Thank you for volunteering.
And, uh, you guys put a thumbs.
Thank you, Board of Education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, everybody. We really appreciate it, and I think I speak on behalf of all of us that we really enjoy what we do, all of you, so thank you. I'm continuing on with the recognition and appreciation. I have a proclamation to read. School administrators, the leaders of public schools, have had a positive impact on students, staff, parents, and members of the community at large. School administrators energize students and staff, respond to student needs, empower others, and recognize and celebrate achievement. Administrators, whether they work directly in a school building or at the district level, share the common goal of providing the foundation environment and professional learning community in which all students can learn and learn well. Administrators are entrusted with the well-being of our community's most precious members, the children. The administrators of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber. Students, parents, staff, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to provide children with a five-star quality education program. To honor the administrative staff of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts on behalf of our community's most valuable resources, the children, I, Michael Marizio, President of the North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude to our administrators and proclaim November 3, 2025, as School Administrator Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. Do I have a motion to declare November 3? Matt, all those in favor? That's unanimous, and please give a round of applause. All right, next up, I'd like to invite Deb Ayers up to give us an update on the district utilization study. Welcome back, Deb.
All right, am I good? Yeah, Terry asked me to come back and just give you a quick update on the work that the Utilization Study Committee has been doing, several of whom are behind me in the room today, so it's great that they're here. Just, I wanted to just revisit with you who our team is. Jen and John and I have been meeting with the Utilization Study Committee. If at any point you would like to reach out to us and have questions yourselves, feel free to do so. There's all of our email information there. So, we started, or the district actually started, by establishing the committee membership back last early summer in May and June. We've got a committee of about 25 people, and they have, as it says here, they've got some extensive background in education and not necessarily employed by your district. They maybe work other places, but there is a lot of experience in the educational setting, so that, I think, has lent a lot of quality input to our committee work so far. We've held four committee meetings, June, July, August, September. We have three remaining meetings, one of which is tomorrow, so the October meeting is tomorrow night. We have been nothing but impressed with the dedication that this committee has shown to this work. The attendance has been outstanding, and having done many of these, I can tell you that's not always the case, but these folks have been very committed, very dedicated. We've noted there that what happens in the beginning is life gets in the way for some of the committee members. They sign up, and with all good intentions, and find they're, you know, it's just too much. We've only had one person actually ask to say, no, I can't, I can't commit. And I appreciate that, I respect that, because I would rather have the people that know that they can be there, and this committee has been great about that. The committee is also willing to share. That doesn't always happen. I've told the story a number of times, that we start each of the, each of the meetings with an optional walkthrough of the building that we're meeting in. Folks that are familiar with the particular building, have had children go through there, whatever, so they don't need to be there, they understand the building, but not everybody has been in that particular building, so we start with that, that's why it's optional. And then when we come back, though, we usually debrief, and we say, you know, what do you notice? What do you wonder about? And very often, in other places, when I've done this kind of work, I have to drag it out of the committee members, but this group, that is not the case. I said, all right, so what did we see? What, you know, what are you thinking? And the conversation just blows, and so I really appreciate their willingness to share, and, as I said, their dedication to the process. So far, we've covered the enrollment and enrollment projections, we've talked about the instructional programming, we've talked about the facilities, capital project work that's gone on, and we've talked about, you know, just a very kind of high-level overview of the fiscal operation of the district. The remaining meetings, the new material to be introduced will be, again, very high-level overview of staffing and transportation. Those are, that's the October focus and the November focus. We've also reviewed with the committee the Ross Hayburn Associate Study that you had commissioned a year or so ago, as well as the very new NYU Metropolitan Center study, and so we will be talking about that at the October meeting, just again, an overview of that work that's been done. So we're trying to provide them with a So we're trying to provide them with as much background information as we possibly can. So some of the early things that have, have come out from the committee, there is, um, a desire it to bring students together earlier, uh, in one building so that you have all of your students. Right now, that happens in eighth grade. And so there is a, an expressed desire to bring them together earlier, however that may look. A desire to reduce, or at the very least not to increase, the number of transitions between buildings. Um, it's important that the professionals within the building get to know the kids. And if they're constantly moving every year or two, that doesn't always happen. So that is been something the committee has talked about. The committee has also talked about the, um, how, how might we address the perceived disparity and experience between the buildings? Particularly, there's been a lot of conversation around the two middle schools. And then early on, we heard some concerns about climate within the junior high. So those are things that have come up in the, in the conversations with the committee so far. Some of the constraints, if you will, I guess, uh, we've talked about four grade levels. Will, will it fit in the high school building in that footprint? And it, it will fit, we believe, uh, might be a little tight, but it will fit. So those are conversations, uh, ongoing with the committee. Same kind of a conversation, three grade levels, three full grade levels will fit in the junior high school building, but four would not. And then neither of the, your two middle schools can hold three full grade levels. At first, someone said, well, they have three grade levels now. The idea is can they hold three all full grade levels? And the answer is no, they, they cannot. Um, so again, this is coming out of ideas that the committee has thrown out there. Um, you have six current, uh, elementary schools and with the current class sizes and based on, uh, last year's enrollment. And you have K-5 buildings? No, that won't fit either. So that, that in that structure is not an option. Probably the thing that's, we have the highest amount of consensus on right now is that the Main Street building is simply not a viable long-term option. Um, and that is something that, how you, how we solve that is part of the work that we have yet to do. Um, some ideas are beginning to emerge. I think tomorrow's meeting, we'll get, uh, really begin to see some of the committee's ideas. Um, we've done a lot of small group work. And that really gives the opportunity for people to really get, I think, engaged, uh, more than they might in the big group. So, uh, that's been valuable. So in conclusion, um, the final committee meeting, which will be the December meeting, will be a review of, uh, we will have written our first draft of the report. And the committee will review that first draft. And it's not unusual for a, for the committee to say, well, okay, we don't like this section. Okay. And then we work together, we'll work through that. Um, we'll take that feedback. And we will develop our final version of the report. And as I said to you in the beginning, the report will be our work. Grossly influenced by what the committee has shared with us. But it, it is, will be our recommendations and, and observations. That report will be shared all with all of you. The three of us will be back in January. Uh, we have got that date, uh, confirmed on all of our calendars and I, I believe on the districts as well. And, uh, we'll have a presentation for you in January on that work. Um, if you have any questions, I, I'm, and what will, what you'll see is that there's no perfect solution. I mean, that is not a surprise to any of you. There'll be pros and cons to each thing. There will be multiple ideas put forth, I'm sure. There'll be pros and cons to each of them, but we, we will hope that it is, uh, a guideline for discussion for your discussion along with the work that's going on simultaneously in, in other areas. Direction. Questions, if you have them, I'm happy to try to answer them. Also. Yeah, yes, uh, that, that is, yes, that is very much in the conversation, Bob. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Hey, we're going to continue on with our BPT presentations, so I'd like to welcome Lindsay and her.
Great. Good evening, everybody. I am Lindsay Maloney, Building Principal at Smith Road.
Ben Nabawonic, Guiding Coalition Chair and Fourth Grade Teacher. So our building demographics, this passed from 2024, 25 to 26, 25, 26, we've grown. Our enrollment has grown by 30 students. We're up to 490, 594. We have 100 instructional staff. Some programs that we have are ENLs. We have four 15 to one special classrooms. Forty-nine percent free to reduce lunch, um, a transient population of 36. And only 26 going, are a Title One building. So our mission and vision relates directly back to the same mission and vision of the district. And everything that we do reflects back to that and all progress.
So our first goal is our MTSS school, um, guiding coalition and win time. So this year, we are, um, we created a guiding coalition. So we took our building planning team and we transitioned into a guiding coalition, very similar to what BPT was. It's instructionally focused. This year, our guiding coalition, um, it's been really amazing. It's, I, I, I've learned over the years that as a building administrator, I, an administration can't do everything. I think I tried doing that. I needed, I felt it was really important that we had a leadership team. And I really feel in the few months, we, we started this last spring. And in the few months, we've done a really good job of creating this team of leaders in the building. So we have representation from all across the building, all grade levels, um, AIS, service providers, TAs. And we are working together. We meet usually bi-monthly, bi-weekly, um, a little more than we did for BPT. So it was a big commitment for our members. Um, but they all voluntarily joined this committee. Um, it wasn't an interview process or people asking. They all joined because they wanted to do the work. They knew what the work was. They wanted to do it. So we now have this amazing leadership team, um, our guiding coalition. We're focusing on MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. Our focus really is, the work we've been doing right now is around this right here. Um, you can see is the Amplify Cycle Guidance Document. And we are using this in our guiding coalition and then taking it out into our collaborative teams to really focus on these steps within, um, the, the process of looking at curriculum. We are focusing on literacy. That's our focus, uh, for this year, but we are also looking at math. But the primary focus is literacy. So teams, we as a guiding coalition just kicked this off as a team. They now are going out into their collaborative teams. And they are starting this process, um, with all of the teams. So we're taking a look at the curriculum, the pacing. We're looking at the assessments, making sure we're administering the assessments the same way. We're looking at proficiency scales, making sure that we are, um, all have the same understanding of proficiency and then looking at that data, coming back, looking at that data and having conversations around what is it that our students are struggling with? What is it that they're excelling in? And then we are providing that, uh, targeted intervention. So we are going to utilize the, um, student growth percentile for this. We're going to look at the Ames Web Reading Screener. This was a, uh, an average of the building. Um, so the typical or high-growth standard growth percentile is, uh, greater than, actually that didn't change on here. It's supposed to be greater than or equal to 45. But we are at 48 and our goal is to get to 53. So just as I had mentioned, um, this is our guiding coalition. We have a few members back here that came to support us, behind us. This is the team that has really been working hard. We have a purpose statement, as you can see there below the picture. We took time to really think about what our purpose is. Um, and that's what we came up with as a committee. So those are our members up there. Graduation rate goal two, um, we are focusing on chronic absenteeism. So we are going to, um, try to decrease our chronic absenteeism from 19 to 16%. We are going to do this by creating a attendance committee. And I will tell you, I'll be honest, if you see in 23, 24 and 24, 25, we stayed stagnant. We didn't make any increase. Our, we had an attendance committee. If you, we created attendance committee there when you see that decrease from 23 to 19. We had a really strong focus on a multi-tiered system of support within attendance. So we had a committee that met, uh, monthly and we were using a tiered approach. And I will say that we did get away from that last year. Um, so we are going to go back to that. We are going to have an attendance committee. We meet, it's a small committee. We meet, um, the beginning of the month and we pull the at-risk student view for attendance. And we just go through with my school psych, my social worker and attendance aide. And we just start to identify the students that are, um, chronically absent. And then with that, we're using a tiered system of support. So we are focusing on that first tier. We reach out to the teachers. We have them reach out to families first, positive communication to the families. Documenting it in school tools. So we have documentation, then going to tier two, which is our social worker to kind of reach out and ask about, um, you know, if we can help in any way as far as access or providing additional supports. And then that third tier is myself, where I'm reaching out to families. And again, positive approaches with all of this and all, all the tiers. Um, we're just having good conversation with families to collaborate with them and come up with ways that we can get their children to school.
We're also, or during our, um, parent-teacher conferences, that every conference, we're talking about the attendance and how well their children are doing with coming in better attendance that, that year than the years past and celebrating that as well. Um, our reading proficiency data. You know, we're making steady progress. You know, slow and steady works well. Um, one big thing we noticed was we have a 10% growth from last year with our state. The state only grew 7%. We grew 10%. That's a big deal that we've grown more than the state has, um, by 3%. We're looking to improve even more with some of our, the ways that we're going to be doing it is guiding coalition really look at data of our assessments, um, what the student prove it better. Um, our win time separating groups, um, using that data as well to get what they need, um, in small group instruction. At MTSS. Math as well, we're trending in the right direction as well. Again, we outgrew the state at a 6% growth. The state had a 3% growth, so great direction. Again, we do have that focus on LA, but that's going to support the math as well. On some students who need that.
I will say this year is the first year that we are going to have all of our grade levels for win time. They will be switching, so it's an all hands on deck approach. Uh, we're going to be, um, creating these targeted groups where the students are fluidly moving throughout the year into, uh, groups based on need or even extension, um, enrichment. So our last goal is our social emotional competency and we use the BIMAS screener for this. And we are focusing on self-awareness. We're looking to increase from 67 to 70% by the end of the spring BIMAS screener. One of the things that we're going to do is have a building-wide focus on teaching, modeling, and practicing self-awareness skills. We're going to do this within lessons, assemblies. We have a morning, uh, live broadcast morning shark show. We do have some classrooms using second step. We don't have all of the classrooms doing that. I will be honest, this is one that we really, um, we struggle with trying to do this building-wide. So we, we need to, I think, talk about this a little bit more within our CTMs as well and how we can incorporate some, some skill building around self-awareness.
Our celebrations, um, at the last board meeting, we celebrated our ENL graduates, um, which was huge. Also this year, for the first time, we did our back-to-school barbecue, combined it with the open house. And it was a huge success, just the amount of families that came out to celebrate. And it was a positive experience where with the back-to-school barbecue, also getting back at the barbecue even more, um, to interact socially with the families made for a great positive environment. We also, this Wednesday, we're having our move-a-thon. Um, we have raised about $16,000 already this year, as of today. And so we have a few more days to push and, you know, it's been awesome. Great relationship with our PTO.
So that concludes our presentation. Does anyone have any questions for us?
We were hoping that you could explain, we were hoping we could explain the second step because that is a new one, at least to the two of us.
Social emotional curriculum, um, that's used, um, it's one of different curriculums. It is used within the district. I will say we used it, the idea is that you're teaching a lesson, the, the classroom teacher is teaching the lesson, and then you're incorporating it. You usually teach it at the beginning of a week. And then you're incorporating those skills throughout all of the other content. Yep.
Apologize for my question. Screw me on this because I was learning. Guiding Coalition.
It's really, so it's really not. And I think that that's the conversation we had within the district was, um, guiding coalition really focuses, it's really around the PLC process. So around those four questions, what do we want our students to learn? And one of the things we've talked about as a district is some buildings have kept a BPT and then created a guiding coalition. At Smith Road, we talked in the spring about how the BPT really was folk instructionally based anyways, and that's what the conversations we were having. So we decided instead of creating another committee, that it really was one and the same.
Just mentioned PLC, but you're calling that a clever.
We call them.
PLC, CTM.
So the idea, and I think we're, we're working on that as a district too. There's a lot of acronyms, I know. And that's one thing this summer, even with our administration, we have a multi-tiered system of support committee. And we really talked about how we are using so many different acronyms. So we're trying to become consistent as a district with those things. Um, so PLC is the idea is that a professional learning community is our entire district. And then we've got our collaborative teams meeting.
Well, last, what, Amplify Cycle.
Yes. So it's actually, it was a collaboration between Amplify and our district. And they created this document to help guide our collaborative teams in that process of looking at assessment data.
One, just one other. I won't ask any two. Looking at the data, it doesn't matter math. Spring '24 for the Ames Web in Bull. When is that given in relation to the?
March, around that spring break time. The Ames Web, we do, uh, fall, first two weeks of school, winter in January, and then end of the year, um, mid, mid-June.
That's informing your MTF.
Yep.
Anyone else? Very much. Okay, now I'd like to welcome Melissa and her team from Cicero.
Hi, good evening. I know, so this is Cash. This is our well-loved therapy dog and he is with his handler tonight, Molly Murphy, who is our school counselor. But we felt that he was very important to be here tonight and we wanted to, you know, bring you some joy this evening. So I'm here with my members of the BPT team. I have with me Tina Perno, who teaches fourth grade. I have Abby Minser, who is one of our AIS providers, and I have Molly Murphy. And then in the back, I also have Mindy Bristol and John Matthews, who have, who come for our support. Oh, and Dave is here too. Thank you, Dave. All right, so welcome to Cicero L. So our mission, similarly to Smith Road, is very similar to the district goal. We, in our meetings, have conversations about how we can improve within our building to make sure that we are meeting district expectations. And that looks like making sure that we are home to students who are happy, who feel safe and who feel like they can be in a safe learning environment to learn and soak up all of that knowledge. More importantly, our vision is really going back to that same three components of the safety, making sure that kids can learn and making sure that my staff have all of the tools in their toolbox to do their job effectively. So our demographics, and actually I was humbled this morning when my secretary looked at our enrollment and said, I don't know where six-twenty-three came from, but it's actually five-hundred-and-sixty-one. So our enrollment is five-ninety-two in two thousand twenty-four. And this school year, we are at five-hundred-and-sixty-one students. So we do have seventy-two staff members plus five Lake Shore Road teachers, which I don't know why I do that because they're just kind of a part of our family anyway. We have twenty-six percent of our students are, have, have IEPs, twenty-nine percent free and reduced. And from last year, we had sixteen added and seventeen left. So again, similarly to Smith Road, we are focusing right now heavily on the MTSS process and really looking to add a fine-tooth comb through our SST plan. We have had several conversations during staff meetings, during CTMs, and just overall with my crisis team on how we can make this a more seamless process. And that's where we are right now. So essentially, we have trained our teachers in the SST process and the kid talk protocols and all of the things that come with that. We've done that through our CTMs and we have a really great climate for our CTMs. I do also have a guiding coalition team. And my guiding coalition team right now, we're, we're kind of getting our feet wet. So I have a grade level representative that will present during CTMs on all of the findings that we do during our guiding coalition meeting. And what I have explained and, and why that's different right now is that we are kind of sifting through the, the bigger picture at BPT and then more so funneling down during our guiding coalition meetings to make things a little bit more finite and to have those conversations during our CTM. And eventually I might create it. We may find that we're having same conversations during BPT, but right now we aren't. So I feel like we need to get to that place to move in that direction. So our graduation rate, this is something that I am particularly proud of because our chronic absenteeism went from ten percent to eight percent. And we know who those students are. So the teachers and I have conversations with, you know, who's going to call this person to make sure that they get to school. Molly and I had conversations the other day about getting an alarm clock for students. We have had several conversations on, you know, just making positive phone calls and just saying how proud we are for these students to show up. And, you know, I like the, the quote, work hard, play hard, and I, I live that every day. And, you know, our students, they can come in and, and they can feel safe and, and they can feel loved. They can eat, but we're also going to teach them something. And it's most important for our students to be there to get all of those things. I also think that Cash really helped in the decrease in chronic absenteeism because what we've done this year is we've created a face where Mrs. Murphy can now be in every hallway at arrival. So the kids look forward to coming in and, and seeing all of those faces. I, I think it's helped tremendously. And obviously our, our measurement is the at-risk data for, from school tool. We use that as well. I'm going to pass it to Abby to talk about our reading proficiency.
So, oh, here we go. Our goal is to increase the percentage of students scoring in tier one, reading composite from the sixty-three percentile to the sixty-seven percentile. And then for our New York State ELA, state has from fifty-four percent to sixty percent. Some of those strategies, we're going to continue to implement CKLA in the classroom, tier-one instruction with fidelity and analyze program assessment data in CT meetings to determine appropriate tier-two and tier-three interventions and different activities as well. The guiding coalition check-ins with the principal to guide the CTM as well as have our meetings utilize school support team and the MTSS supports as necessary and monitor student progress to make adjustments as needed. So as you can see, good increase. Really good increase. Here's Tina.
My turn. All right, so our math proficiency goal is what's up next. Obviously want to increase our percentage of students that are scoring on tier-one on the math composite. We're looking to go from seventy percent to seventy-five percent. And we would also like to see our New York State math assessment go up as well from sixty-three to percentage to the sixty-sixth percentile. We're going to continue to implement the Intermath program for our tier-one instruction and look at our math assessment data in our collaborative team meetings to determine some appropriate tier-two and tier-three interventions and support for all students. We are utilizing, of course, our SST, our school support team and our MTSS supports as we need them. And we monitor student progress and make adjustments as needed as well. Hey, you switched that screen on me, that's okay. We're using our math benchmark assessments that we have set up for grade levels as well as Ames Web and the New York State math assessment. She must think I memorized this. Now I'm ready, you may move it now. And as you can see, our, our goals, we have definitely gone up. We had a little dip in the spring of two thousand twenty-four, but we have made up for that and hoping to make it even better this year. As well as our New York State math assessment has steadily gone up every year and we're hoping to make that an even bigger jump this year.
Now we'll pass it to Mrs. Murphy and Cash.
So we're talking about now the emotional competency and you can see, you know, the impact just in this. How Cash really helps our kiddos and our staff as well. So, you know, looking at the competencies, we have moved to Character Strong this year, which is a way of teaching social emotional, managing emotions, identifying emotions, working together. You can see all the categories. And already it's been pretty amazing watching the impact of this program on our students. When we have our SOAR meetings, which are once a month, the first month was kindness, the first two weeks, and listening to them sing the kindness song, the entire room, the children were singing. And not just saying the words, but really getting into what it was all about. And it happened again with, we, okay, that's one-off. No, we did respect. And the older kids were also singing the song and talking about how they show respect. So we're really excited that this new program will help to increase our students' ability to manage themselves. I really think that, you know, our modeling of this for students is critical. And just being able to see Cash, you know, in Cash's unconditional love, that really helps them to know they belong at Cicero Elementary and they're important and they're loved. So this is what we are all about. I also wanted to say, Mrs. O'Donnell, that the, the numbers, those were the Lake Shore kids because as you said, they're a part of the whole. That, that was what the, because it's about sixty-five. So all of these things you can see in the list, the kid talks are very important before they come to SST. And the check-in, check-outs, it's maybe feeling a little bit lost to help them know. Yes, and we have our Promise Zone specialist, who's wonderful, Hannah Ibrahim. And she really is great about working with kids who need to be de-escalated and connecting as well. So we have a really great building and very thankful, thankful that you all allow Cash to be with us. So looking at our BIMAS scores, anytime we have a student with a high alert, we are notified. And nine times out of ten, we are already, one of us are already seeing that student. If we aren't, we are following up within the day to make sure that they are connected with supports. And then really looking at these scores in the spring and seeing how we've grown. I, I think there's a parallel between our increase in attendance and having a therapy dog, but that's just me.
So everything soars into the nest. And I know that I've explained this to the board prior to this meeting, but everything we do revolves around our nest. So our school is considered the nest, that's, that's where we go every day. We soar. Chipper is our mascot and Chipper has only grown with the help of Jason Clark because I, I poke Jason for a lot of technology assistance and he, he helps me a lot. So we have really created something beautiful with that because all of our students are called the Eglets. And even parents that see me outside of school, I was in Target just the other day and a parent said, you're doing a really great job with those Eglets. And I thought, I could cry because that's, that's what it's all about, right? I, I want that sense of community, I want our students to feel like they belong. Something new this year is that our PTG has really increased their focus and their attention on our building. You know, not for nothing, but we experienced some, we experienced some loss this year and it was very hard. And luckily, our PTG was there to support us when we were down and I very much appreciate that. The Treat Your Teacher Friday, I do that every month. And then of course, the, the Cash check-ins. So we feel like those are, are great. Our back-to-school barbecue was the most attended event that we've ever had. It was incredible. The amount of volunteers and the amount of baskets that we had donated was just amazing. So we're looking forward to our trunk-or-treat, which will be Wednesday. So come on out, if you're feeling like you want to get some candy and see some cute kids. So this is our BPT, these are our members. And now Chipper is asking if you have any questions. He lives with Mrs. Murphy.
Dog or is he a bear?
I think he's both.
I just have one clarifying question. Mrs. Murphy, were you my counselor?
It's so funny because I have two former students on the board and I'm just.
What building were?
Junior high.
Junior high.
Yeah. Oh my God, you know what?
Mike, I, Mr. Marizio, Mrs. Murphy is not going to share this with you, but she shared it with me. She said that one day you told her that you wanted to make a change in education in her eighth or ninth grade conversation with you. And she remembers it.
I have a comment to make and I apologize. Molly, you were my, you were in, in, in the junior high. You were my kids counselor. You were amazing. I, 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 you are amazing. I, I believe I wrote you a letter. I hope I got you a gift. And I tried to, I tried to, you know, make sure I gift my kids educators and teachers all that time. But you helped both of my kids through a very, very difficult time. You significantly and positively impacted their lives and thank you. Thank you so much.
We feel the same way. Very, we're very blessed. I'm very fortunate to have the entire staff at Cicero L that we do, very much. All right, well, thank you guys so much. Oh, sorry.
No, you know I would have. Dr. Kramer and I were at an event, I don't know if she remembers this. Oh, Josh might have been there too. And I had to leave the room for a second and there was a little boy there. And of course, I always ask every kid what school you go to. And he said, well, I go to Cicero Elementary. I said, well, you know, I saw on the website, the Chipper is missing. I saw, I saw your principal with the police and the siren going. He said, don't worry, sir, I found him at Spiritus. That is, that is a true story. I'm, I'm gonna, now that we've had all of our elementary schools, I have a few comments, okay? Not really any questions. I thank Dr. Veal for being here. Her child went through your school and now is at Gillette. She's only been here a month, but I think she sees the dedication, the caring, the positivity found in our elementary schools in the North Syracuse Central School District. We're here laughing and seeing all those good things that are happening in, in our schools. And it's truly, and I will say this, the middle school and the high school, is the dedication of our teachers. There are quite a few of us here that are either married to or we're elementary teachers or principals presently, knowing that the changes in education and what's happening in elementary schools. And I know of a special project at your school. And one of my very big concerns, and Mr. Babikin is there, and has been here for ten years, is scheduling at the elementary school. It isn't like the junior high, it isn't like the middle school, it isn't like the high school. Elementary teachers must teach everything. At the middle school, our fifth and sixth graders, they are on a team, starting in fifth grade. So there are teachers, unlike Mr. Crabtree, that have the ELA background. Mr. Crabtree had the mathematics and the science background and social stuff. So every one of these teachers at the elementary school, and this goes for AIS and it goes for guidance and it goes for, it's amazing what you do. You have a special program. You got a person right here that's part of that program that you're starting in, that started in fourth grade. Could you just real quickly tell them the board about that program?
Sure, actually my teammate is back there.
Yes, yeah.
John Matthews is back there. So last year, we implemented a teaming program where in fourth grade, each of the elementary schools has a team of teachers who work together to teach two subjects in two subjects. So I teach the ELA curriculum and the social studies curriculum and Mrs. Matthews in the back there teaches science and math. I, I must say that we had some amazing results, at least at our building, from last year. I missed our first teaming meeting unfortunately, but I heard that our results were amazing for scores. And I did check our scores as well, both state scores and Ames Web scores. The kids have received the program amazingly. They love having more than one person to teach them. We are two totally different people, two capable people, but we are totally different ends of. different ends of the spectrum um I would call myself the really loud one and she's the very quiet one but we both give them everything that we can and we were very lucky to have is Amanda still here Amanda's daughter last year in our class with us on our team so she got to experience that with us um it has assisted us with planning um working together we actually have another teammate with us Amy Jaqueline because we are a special ed team so it's brought challenges as Bob said with the scheduling for sure but we have made it work we are in our second year of it and hoping that it will continue uh we think that it has made a very positive impact not only on the children but on the parents have enjoyed it as well uh we get lots of compliments on it um and it does take a lot to implement it it's a lot of getting the kids to understand how to move classrooms how to um understand each other's space and not touch each other's things uh every year last year as we implemented we had to make some changes and we've had to make some changes this year with our schedule as well to make it work but the program itself has just I feel like it has blossomed so much the children and even us as well as teachers for sure because as Bob said some of us have that background um Mrs. Matthews has a math background um I have a reading background a literacy background so not that I wasn't capable of teaching every subject nor she was as well it was just we both are able to hone in so much more on our subject areas so
And and I would say for fourth grade I don't want kindergarten teachers to be calling me tomorrow first grader I see it working in fourth fourth grade and the reason I bring this up and I go back to Dawn and Tina and also Matt Gates there are a lot of things that cannot happen in elementary classroom anymore there's just not enough time and my board members will know every year I've asked someone to tell about the day you know what they go through and you don't have the time and this is really sad in our in in every school district Dr. Ward it's not just North Syracuse is that we don't have time a lot of time we do have some time and you're getting more of doing the social studies and having our children this is what I see what's wrong in our country to learn what democracy is we teach in fourth grade a little bit about the Constitution we we do a lot of New York State um you know understanding the Iroquois nation and so forth a lot of that cannot be done because there's just no time in the day and the three of us along with Matt would always we did it for years and years they were in a different school than me they were in a different school than me and we got our kids together and we did an election and a debate and taught all that there's no time for that anymore and it and it's really sad and I would say hopefully down the road before I leave that this school can decide on a some kind of scheduling in improvement at the elementary level I truly mean that again thank you to all of you and to all the elementary schools you're amazing
At this time is our comments from the audience we have no speakers this evening but as always we welcome any input Next I'll move on to Board of Education Committee report
Mike uh we met last week and we have two policies on tonight's agenda for the board's re-adoption
I really don't have a report for the um legislative committee I would say to my committee if you have any topics you want to discuss at our next meeting I would do that and with the OCMBOSI's report you all receive that on Friday um really if you have questions contact me thank you
Thanks comments Dr. Ward
So again I do want to thank the Board of Education for your service and commitment to our school districts sorry we missed it by a week but we didn't have a board meeting last week so uh so we decided to bring it tonight um the only other piece I have is um this week Thursday um there's a Central New York Youth Mental Health Summit um and that's at Embassy Suites um it's seven thirty to four thirty and the reason I I bring that up is because I'm involved in the in the summit um I'm one of the panelists that's in the afternoon um but it talks all about that universal health screening tool called the BIMAS that we use as a school district I'll be I'll be talking about that um and how it has positively affected our students um in our district so so that's something um that I wanted to share with everyone that's all I had
Just briefly Paul and I are going to the DISPA conference this weekend and if there's any specific topics that anyone is interested in having discussed we just let us know and we'll try to make sure we get to one of those seminars
Alright uh it's my turn and I will try to get through this uh closed so um I want to start by confirming what many of you have already heard I'll be stepping down from the Board of Education and ending my second term early I've accepted a new job it's taking me out of the area uh it's exciting yes but it's also a very bittersweet moment for me serving this community has been uh one of the greatest honors of my life I joined the board to bring a new voice a youthful perspective and to make sure the kids had someone in their corner I never imagined I'd be here but I'm so glad I was over the years I met some incredible people colleagues mentors and most importantly lifelong friends my fellow board members and to Jill especially thank you thank you for geez thank you for welcoming me from day one for making me feel comfortable and for not just hearing what I had to say but really listening you made sure my voice was always heard and I can't tell you how much that meant to me community thank you for trusting me public service only works when there's trust and I've tried to honor that every single day to the students you're the reason I did this keep using your voices keep challenging us and keep believing that your ideas matter you are the heart of this district and you make every late night every tough decision and every challenge worth it I'm proud of what we've accomplished but I also know that there's more work to do and I'm confident that the district is in the right hands with Dr. Ward leading the way and with the board's dedication I know we're on the right path in four years we've strengthened programs increased transparency and kept the focus on students but what excites me most is what's still ahead this role has challenged me taught me and reminded me what real service looks like I leave proud proud of what we've done proud of who we've become and proud to have served alongside all of you thank you from the bottom of my heart for letting me be a part of this it has truly been an honor
So today I will be talking about an update on our student voter registration plan um we are going to push into social studies classrooms primarily senior classrooms so that would be participation in government uh economics AP economics and AP government and we are going to prepare a presentation and kind of a step-by-step how to register and hopefully um other classroom like the just the students will go through it with us uh we are also going to have a setup in our career center where students can come in during lunch and help us we can help them uh also our fall sports are wrapping up I know for me my our sport is the last one to wrap up November ninth uh so that's amazing we've done had a great season um yeah and that's about it
Very much Now to routine action items item A is the consideration I have a motion to approve those minutes Paul and Mandy any questions or comment all those in favor that's unanimous I'll take B and C together the consideration and classification of student I have a motion to accept B and C together as a Any questions or comments all those in favor Declaration of marketable and non-marketable surplus do I have a motion to accept those as presented Paul any questions or comments That's unanimous Question action items the first one is the request for approval for award of removal equipment To award the contract to outdoor power in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and a cent I have a motion to And Josh any questions or comments all those in favor Us to approve of award for the two thousand twenty-three district state Project we have I have a motion to accept those Beth and Mandy questions or comments
I just just a quick question what what's it mean alternates never saw it It says alternates the base bid then alternates in the total
Resolution to create a one point oh eight Beth and Mark comments Random of agreement dated September Paul and Mandy any questions all those in favor Have a request for approval of an Paul any questions or comment Do I have a motion for that Josh and Paul and Mark any questions or comments Next we have a request for approval of award I have a motion to approve these And man questions or comments all those in favor Mark and Amanda any questions or comments
You have a question on one of the Just a quick question I'm assuming all the chart and the badge access badges are programmed to meet all those times All those in favor Paul thank you any comments all those Motion to approve Questions or comments